Please call February 14, 2018 Peters Township Plan and Commission meeting order. Ed, roll call please.
Mr. Wiley will not be here tonight. Mr. Kartaphilis, here. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Mills.
Here.
Mr. Magrino.
Here.
Mr. Selepus.
Here.
And I do want to introduce tonight, council on Monday night appointed Harry Verlato as the new alternate.
Okay.
So he'll officially start in March for the next meeting. And if you could just maybe come up and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
I'm trying to keep it short.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for inviting me here today. And I'll just hopefully give you a very brief synopsis of my history. Basically, initially when I began my birth here in Pittsburgh, in Brookline, met my wife in Carnegie, and we've been happily married a little over 50 years, so that's a plus.
Fairly happy marriage.
I'm a retired captain from the Air National Guard after seventeen and a half years of service. Actually, six of those in the beginning were with the United States Army. And then I attended school when I began working with 3M Company, and we were located in Green Tree at the time. Thankfully, they paid for my education, and I attained my BBA at Robert Morris University. Then shortly after I graduated, they promoted me out to Davenport, Iowa to take over a facility out there of about 75 individuals. Where I had EEO, OSHA, a lot of different facility problems. I had sales service, warehousing, everything. So I took that over, and then two years later, they decided they were closing the facility. But while I was there, I was going for my MBA, and I never completed it at St. Ambrose, so I tried to transfer the credits back to Pittsburgh, and nobody would accept the credits. So I was so busy in doing these things back in Pittsburgh, I lasted here another four years, and we closed Pittsburgh. I was sent out to Chicago, Illinois, in that facility, and I took over two places there, one in Westchester and another one in Bedford Park. Was there for about 16 years, and then we moved to Minnesota and spent eight years there where I retired and came back home in 2005. And we presently reside here in Hidden Brook. Very happy there. Since we've been back here, and we do a lot of volunteering since I'm retired, I belong to St. Ben's Catholic Church here, and I've done fish fries, I'm ushering there. And we actually spent eight years, my wife is part of the library, Peters Township, and we spent eight years co-chairing the Taste of the Township for the library. And while I was in Chicago, I spent 16 years as president of the Homeowners Association where we lived. I've taught junior achievement project business while I was there for 10 years to seventh and eighth graders. I also served on their board for junior achievement. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell, without getting into more details and boring you. But thank you very much for giving me some time here today, and I hope to do whatever I can to help you guys out. And, Lee. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Any reports or correspondence?
There are none, other than I want to, the annual reports in your package. Emily works hard on that. Approval of minutes though, you skipped over.
Okay. The, can we give a motion to approve the minutes from the January 18, 2018 meeting, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the January 18, 2018 meeting minutes.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ed, any site subdivision's file for review?
None.
Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Any audience comments on items not on the agenda? Moving on to new business, final plan, Venetia Point, 2018 lots, 1, 2, 3, Anderson Station.
This is the Venetia Point Plan, originally got approved and started in 2007. It's, there are 14 units built there now. Plan tonight records three new lots, lots 1, 2, and 3, the first three lots in the right as you would come into the plan up Anderson Station off of Venetia Road. As the Mardics who own and are developing this townhouse project, as they are ready to begin building units, they're coming in and recording the lots. So they're ready to build units on 1, 2, and 3. Originally, all 33 lots were originally recorded, and when they sold the first unit, they started being taxed on all the lots, and that became a burden for Mardics, so they came and unrecorded those lots in 2014, I think they did that. And now, the plan before due tonight, and it's a recommendation to council, is simply to record lots 1, 2, and 3 so that they can begin building the three units on Anderson Station. So it's a simple final plan. Planning staff's recommending we recommend to council that we approve the plan, subject to Washington County Planning Commission review, Peters Creek Sanitary Authority approval, and the lot addresses for these lots be included on the plan. And there's a change, we're gonna, the addresses are gonna be 100, 102, and 104, not 94, 96, and 98, that was in my original report. And the plan has already been changed to refer to those addresses, and the project title and sheet RPO2 be updated. So recommending that we approve this plan, subject to the four conditions. Included in your package, the new townhouse units that they're building. Originally, four units were approved for this area. They're only gonna do three, they've made them a little bigger, first floor master. And I think that we'll see, as they continue to build, the remaining units, we're gonna see this type of unit built out in the Venetia Point Plan.
Any additional comments, body of comments on the subject?
Just one, Ed.
Can you please come up, introduce yourself, please?
Bruce Conacher, Cobalt Professional Services. The only other thing I want to mention is, they already have the three taps for the sewers, so that's not a problem.
Right.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
They've had those for, actually, just some background, when we did this plan, those were gonna be the first three units built. Then they realized that all the construction traffic would pass that constantly, so they moved to the back. But they had already purchased those three taps. They've had those taps for probably 10 years, you know, maybe longer than that, probably 13 years, so.
Did they already have purchased taps for the rest, or just those three lots?
Well, the ones that are built, of course, are purchased, but not for the others, no.
Okay.
And as a matter of fact, this was a little bit of a change-up, the, we were looking at putting the units in here, but we couldn't get cap, we couldn't get taps.
Because of the tap.
It was a cap, yeah, yeah. So, but at any rate, like I said, we already have those taps, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion?
I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend for approval, the Venetia Point Plan lots, as, including those three comments outlined in staff's memo, February 8, 2018, with the noted change to the addresses that Mr. Zook noted.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Planning Commission recommendation for the Just About Farms Final Plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be recusing myself, editing this discussion.
Mr. Verlato was talking, I was texting Grant Schirring, he's running late, so I'll display these. I'm gonna bring it on PowerPoint, but we'll use these instead. Tonight, this item is the Just About Farms Final Plan, this is a recommendation to council. The property, total size of this property is 26-plus acres. The property's owned low-density residential, it's in the conservation residential overlay. They're using the conserve, CR overlay option to develop the property. Both Planning Commission and council have approved this master plan, preliminary plan, back in 2017, late 2017. The original approved preliminary plan showed 58 lots. They've scaled that back to 48. They did that for the purpose of allowing side-entry garages instead of front-entry. They made the lots a little bigger. It's a total of 48 lots. Access to the project will be both from Just About Road, which is a state road. They'll need Pendott Highway occupancy permit approval, and they've submitted those plans to Pendott to get that HOP permit. They'll also connect up to Bauer Hill Road. At Bauer Hill Road, the plans are showing a raised intersection, a traffic calming feature on Bauer Hill Road. It's part of the public improvements, that'll be the responsibility of Just About Development Open space, they're required to provide 6.4 acres of open space. Their actually gross open space being provided is almost 10 acres, 9.9 acres net open space. When you deduct out the easements for sanitary sewers and storm sewers and the stormwater management facility, they're down to 7.35 acres, which is over 25% of the overall site. Stormwater management, there's a big stormwater management facility down off of Just About Road at the lower end of the property. That stormwater management facility will be privately owned by, owned and maintained by the Just About Farms HOA. We'll make them sign a stormwater maintenance agreement as part of that maintenance responsibility. So all the runoff from all the roads and all the homes is being piped and made to that stormwater management facility. Sanitary sewer service, it's in the brush-run watershed, Peters Township Sanitary Authority. They have DEP planning module approval. They're working with the Peters Township Sanitary Authority on final construction plan approval. They're getting close. This proposed development will provide sewer service to an area of Snyder. By, there'll be sanitary sewers that run up behind the lots, and there'll be an easement extended up through this open space so that folks that live on the, I'll call it the upper portion of Snyder Lane, will have access to public sewers. In addition, up here on Bauer Hill Road, there'll be sanitary sewer easements, and the sanitary sewers will be in place to provide sewer service to unserviced lots up on Bauer Hill Road. As part of what the township does, and the sanitary authority does, is make sure that the sanitary sewer construction plans are designed to facilitate those future connections. Just today, I received a review from the sanitary authority, and some easements need to be adjusted on this final plan for recording to make sure that the folks on Bauer Hill Road, as well as on Snyder, will have access to those sewers. Each, each of these lots is subject to a traffic impact fee of $1,005.37. So as building permits come in for individual lots, they'll pay that fee as part of the, prior to building permit issuance, they have to pay the traffic impact fee. You know, the proposed units are patio homes, they're targeting empty nesters, they range in size from 1,700 to 2,400 square feet. All units will have first floor master suites. The exteriors are similar to Sherwood Pond, it's the craftsman-style building, combinations of stone and cement siding. The anticipated starting price range is in the $500,000 and up territory. And as I mentioned, the layout has been adjusted so that these lots can have side-entry garages. Mr. Schirring's here, but I'm gonna.
Did they ever solve the issues of the runoff problems on the site, on the Just About?
Well, as part of this development, it will solve the runoff sites. It's just free-flowing down the hill now. Once this plan gets going, and all the ENS controls are in place, and the stormwater management facility's in place, that runoff will be controlled.
Okay.
So we'll let Mr. Schirring go through and present his plan, and when he's done, we'll make a recommendation to council.
I apologize to everybody for being late, got my meeting times mixed up. Been here a million times, my apologies, I should've known.
You figured I was gonna hear.
I guess so.
Scrambling, scrambling.
You sent me the text, I was like, oh geez. But it seems like Ed's given a pretty thorough review of what we've done, what changes have been made. Just to address the first question, Mr. Mills, we do have our MPDES approvals from the county, and a part of those controls are a diversion swale that are coming by the entrance, the entrance drive along Just About, and that will direct all runoff into the sediment pond that's gonna be installed along Just About. So we believe that once the construction activity goes underway, we'll be able to resolve the issue of the water running across Just About in Tuscany.
Greg, do you need that to?
Yeah, I was gonna point out where this swale, but I think this should be okay.
As I came in, I heard Ed speaking about the sanitary sewer connections. I did see the exhibits that were provided by HRG and the sanitary authority. I believe that we can provide those easements in the locations that are being requested. The first is located here, to provide an access easement for this property. The other one is located here, to provide access to the two properties to the east on the, on the projection screen. So, right now, we have an easement running along the property line. Seems like we just need to move that so that we can get the proper fall for those lots to actually connect into our proposed system. So I see no issue with that. I don't know if Ed had stated that we also have included a raised traffic island median in the, the entrance along Bauer Hill Road. And that was one of the requests in the preliminary plan approvals. So other than that, I can answer any questions that you guys have.
Greg, just so people understand, if I watch this on TV, where does that come out on Bauer Hill? How close to Bauer Hill Elementary?
Approximately, yes.
I was gonna say it's under a half.
Quarter mile east of Bauer Hill Road.
Okay. I think the new school development, the new school being developed is in between, there's a couple houses within this.
That old, the old house.
The old school houses in between.
Yeah, that, that development's approximately here.
Yeah, I've heard there are several houses.
It's almost directly straight up off the entrance at Just About.
Correct, correct.
Greg, you wanna just, you know, it's conservation residential, talk about the road and sidewalks on both sides, and get into all that detail.
Yes, so as part of the preliminary approval in the new conservation residential district, the cart paths are actually narrower. We have 10-foot cart paths rather than 12-foot. There are also sidewalks that will be located on both sides of the street throughout this development. We're also going to be proposing a trail that will wrap around the rear of the lots here, and connect to the entrance to Just About, to the entrance on Bauer Hill. With, with the development we're proposing, originally, we came in with 54 lots, we are now at 48. So we went from a 2.5 units per acre down to a 2. With the 2 units per acre, I believe we required 25% open space, and we're at roughly 26%. So the whole, as Ed was discussing as I came in, the whole intent was to, the change, the reduction in lots was to permit wider lots so that we could incorporate the side-entry garages, which we believe creates a better street aesthetic, because rather than looking at the garage fronts, you're now looking at a front facade of a home.
HOA responsible.
HOA will be maintaining the open space, and at this point in time, too, the detention facility will be maintained by an HOA.
Ed, at what point in time does the township take that over? You're proposing now, to take that over?
Take what over?
The detention facility.
It'll, it'll be the responsibility of the HOA forever, and they'll sign a maintenance agreement, a stormwater maintenance agreement for that. The township will own all the pipes that go into it, and the headwalls, and the physical pipes that feed the detention facility.
Okay.
The HOA will maintain the landscaping around it, and if it ever needs cleaned of sediment, that'll be the responsibility of the HOA. One other thing that's happened in Peters, all new developments in Peters are cluster mailboxes, so.
I was gonna ask you about that, if this falls.
Greg, you just wanna show them where that's gonna be located?
It does. So originally, we were talking about the cul-de-sac, but we don't believe that's the best option. What we're probably gonna do is place a couple parallel parking spaces here, and locate the cluster mailbox in that location.
Is that by postal code?
Every, every municipality we're going into, the post office is requiring that.
So.
We have two postal codes, right?
Both Venetia and Murray are requiring cluster mailboxes in all new developments.
There's no option, that's it.
So does the post office have to come and approve that?
We will send a plan to the post office to make sure that they approve the location.
So all our new developments, Brookwood Village, Brookwood Place, Cherry Woods, they're all providing the cluster.
It's a good question to ask upfront, so it's not an afterthought.
It's not an item of conditions.
And the site distance issues have been, you guys are taking care of?
When we came in for preliminary.
Down.
Yeah, when we came in for preliminary approval, originally, we had the road coming to intersecting with Bauer Hill, 40 feet to the left. We had to move that to the right to get the site distance. There were no issues on Just About Road. There was one tree that we had to take down, that was taken down, and Pendott confirmed that we do have the adequate site distance there. So we've, we've received our planning module exemption for sanitary sewer. We've received our MPDES permit. The only thing we're waiting on is Pendott for the permanent access to Just About Road. We expect our comments back in the next two weeks. We've also received the comments from TPD and Mike Mudry, just so you're aware. There's three comments on that, just regarding the access here in the median. We have to make some adjustments for the school bus to come in. We're gonna get our comments back from Pendott and make sure that they have no major changes, and then we'll make that adjustment to that entrance as well.
Can you show them the traffic calming features?
There are, at the entrances, there are islands. There's one at this entrance, there's one at Just About entrance, and also, this intersection will be a stop control intersection, and there's another island located here. So this, this is the longest straightaway. We installed a traffic calming island in that location. So in addition, in addition to the smaller cart path, which acts as traffic calming itself, so will these traffic islands and the stop intersection.
The other thing is that the HOA will maintain that landscaping within that median, and I want to point out that we do have their HOA documents, they've been reviewed, reviewed by our township solicitor, and it clearly indicates what ultimately the HOA is going to be responsible to maintain. So anyone buying in there will know what they're buying. So staff's recommending that we recommend to council that we approve the Just About Farms Final Plan, subject to the 10 conditions listed in my report. And I'd like to add a 11, I just, it's my understanding there's some private storm sewers?
Correct. Well, actually, we've been talking with Mark as well, and I believe all that we're gonna be taken over. We originally thought the rear roof leaders would be private, but I believe they're being taken over, correct?
We'll work through that, but just in case, I'm gonna say, if, if there are going to be private storm sewers, they, they need to be clearly labeled in the easement as privately owned and maintained.
Understood, understood.
If they're not, then they need to be made part of the public storm sewer easement. So that's condition 11. Maybe I should, I'll go through my recommended conditions. Our standard condition is that the developer-owner execute and record this subdivision improvement agreement. That includes posting all fees and escrows, and they have to financially secure all the public improvements before the township will release the plan for recording. Washington County Planning Commission review, Peters Township Sanitary Authority approval of the final construction plans, and we want that done prior to council considering the plan for final approval. Gateway engineers finalizing their approval of the plan and the construction plans, including providing the township with the cost estimate for the public improvements prior to council considering the plan for final approval. Final lot addresses beyond the recorded plan. HOP be issued by Pendott prior to the township releasing the plan for recording. All earthwork be monitored by a geotech engineer as they're out there doing the earthwork, and those reports be submitted to the township. We need a detail of the raised intersection at Bauer Hill and the new access road, I don't know, did we finalize apes on these streets yet?
We will, we will. We need to, just one comment, too, we need to work with TPD on the actual details of what that raised island looks like.
Final construction plans include the details of the cluster mailbox, and we get that designed in there before we go to council, and correcting, you got Bauer Hill.
Saw that, yep.
At the top of the, that's 10, and then the 11, all private storm sewers be indicated, and the easement be labeled private if there are going to be private sewers. That's all I got.
And any audience comments on this, five of these guys?
Monica Merrill, 105 Walnut Drive, Woodlands. I thought I'd come here and be on the other side of the podium for a change. The reason I'm here is just because Woodlands is the plan that's right at the top of the hill on Bauer Hill, across from the Just About entrance, and Just About Farms entrance. And I wanted to just make a couple comments. I'm glad that you have included traffic calming. Anyone who lives on Bauer Hill has frequently used Ivy as a cut-through. This is going to become a cut-through to get from the top of the hill down to the bottom to get out to the main highway. So the traffic calming will be helpful. One thing about the raised intersection, that was part of the traffic calming, and it seems, it's moving to the west, I guess, from where. it seems, it's moving to the west, I guess, from where it originally was, right below the top of the hill, because you're moving your entrance. You acquired a second piece of property up there, I guess?
We acquired, we acquired this entire piece, yes.
No, you acquired the whole thing, but it's, did you acquire an additional piece to help enable the move down?
No, no, we didn't.
Okay. I thought I saw that transfer. Anyway, it's...
There was a, on the bottom or on Just About portion, didn't you do a property swap?
On Just About portion, correct.
Right. I guess my question is, the raised intersection has moved closer to the entrance of Woodlands, which is Walnut Drive. Am I correct?
It has moved further from it, by 40 feet.
It could actually move toward Bebout.
So, it's closer to the crest of the hill?
Oh, towards Bebout?
Yes.
Oh, that way.
Yeah. When you're coming from Bebout on Bauer Hill, if you're familiar at all with it, just before you get to Bauer Hill School, there's a crest of the hill, and then it comes down again. And that's one of the only other concerns about the location of the entrance, because people coming up over the hill, even though it's 25 miles an hour and people have been paying attention.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to say that I have some concerns about that, but I know that that's where that needs to be located, so...
Where they're locating it, based on Scott Schaefer and Mike Mudry looking at it from TPD, our traffic engineer, the site distance for the new drive, new road intersection with Bauer Hill, it's 250 feet looking left and 500 feet looking right.
Okay. So, then that would be nearer to the private drive that's right at the top of that hill?
Yes.
Okay. Not okay, I'm sure they're not gonna like that that much.
So, the crest, I believe the crest you're talking about is located here.
Yes.
This is, this is the piece of property that we could acquire?
Mm-hmm.
So, the access drive, the road is coming out here.
Okay.
The crest, I believe, is in this location. So, we had to move it 40 feet this way in order to provide that adequate site distance.
So, it is moving, okay, so I'm, I'm correct then?
It is closer to Walnut.
It is closer to Walnut. Okay. So, the distance between that and Walnut has shortened a bit. Okay. So, that, I understand that that probably is what had to happen. Okay. I just wanted to make a comment about the traffic calming, because as I said, it's going to become a route from Bauer Hill down to East McMurray and the Bebout intersection. So, I'm glad you're doing that.
Traffic calming will help.
And also, it'll be good for the people who can potentially tap into the sewers. Now, that will be based on them, I guess, understanding that they're going to have to request that if they want to do it.
Yeah, the authority is aware of folks on Snyder's Lane's desire to tie in, and they're designing it so that it can. I think there will be some costs associated with that that'll have to be dealt with by those landowners. You might wanna, I know that there's some residents here from Snyder that might want to comment on that.
And I'll finish my comments and just say thank you very much for...
Thanks. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Mark Van Stendale. I live on Snyder. I've been there almost 30 years now, and I've always had the desire to tie into the public sewer. This is like our last opportunity, because it's all developed around us. And it looks like it's gonna be in a good spot. Obviously, there will have cost to get it down there, in addition to a tap-in fee, am I right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, hopefully, it's economical, justified. I hope I'm not the only one in our neighborhood that wants to do it. I was gonna ask about your timeline, like, are we looking over the next couple of years? Or is it...
This spring.
This spring, right around?
They have a contractor looking to move forward very soon. As soon as the weather starts to operate, I believe they're gonna start moving dirt. So, first, first phase is this phase?
Mm-hmm.
So, this would be installed probably, I'm gonna say it's gonna be, once they do get started, probably two to three months of earthwork, and then they'll start site improvements, being storm and sanitary lines being installed.
What's your earliest, I mean, when did the storm sewers come in before you build? Or that, that's all part of the...
The first, the primary...
Or not the storm sewers, but the sanitary.
Primary activity will be earthwork, then storm, then sanitary.
Okay. I guess we need to go through the process with the sanitary authority to go about that.
We'll make sure that the plans that are being approved will facilitate you and folks that live above you on Snyder can connect in.
Great.
Has notice been given to the adjacent homeowners about this potential opportunity?
Well, we notify property owners within a 600-foot radius of this development that the plans are here. Come and look at them at the planning department, and they'll be on a future Planning Commission council agenda. And we, in that letter, we point them to how to look at that agenda online, on cable. So, there's been a few folks in to look at the plans. I know the gentleman up on Bauer Hill is very interested as well as tying his house into, you point that out, Grant, top left?
This one?
That, they want to tie their house into the public sewer, and so Peters Township Sanitary Authority is aware of that. The plans, as we review them and the authority reviews them, are making sure that those easements and those sewer lines are designed to facilitate those connections.
Where's the water gonna come from? Just About, the public water be down there? So, that's probably out of reach for us down there. But most important for the sewer is the sewer. All right, thank you.
No problem.
Do you need Commissioner comments? I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation to council of Just About Farms' final plan, subject to the 11 conditions as detailed therein, I should say 10 conditions plus the additional 11 condition as detailed therein.
It's dealing with the private storm sewers.
Yeah, dealing with the private storm sewers and the easements. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Greg, anything else?
Any report you guys have, I want to thank Emily for putting that one together.
Thanks, Emily, it's great.
Next month, we'll probably have the Juniper Woods Plan on the agenda. That's the one that connects to Manor Way, so... And then we have a potential few other developments coming in March.
Good.
For the March agenda. And that March agenda is the second Wednesday.
Yeah, back to normal.
Then we, in April, we move back to the second Thursday.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Anything, Greg?